I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Tom Walers?
Yes.
Salvi, Dellicson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Gee.
Yes. Citizen comments. We have a couple things. First of all, does anybody have anything that they want to talk to the council that's not on the agenda? Okay, so Chief, I will turn it over to you.
Council, Mayor, City Manager, we bid adieu our hopefully last officer for a while. Started on December 1st. Name is Corbin Kells. Comes far away, grew up in Appleton, part-time for La Crosse Sheriff's Office in Appleton PD since February. We will stay on with those agencies part-timey but mainly focusing here and hopefully things don't interfere and cross over too much. You did, we'll have our ceremonial swearing in if Aaron if you want to do that.
It's the only time I get to swear at an officer. I'm having to turn just a little bit so we can get the picture here. I gotta get my best hair.
Best side.
The best side, most bolded. If you raise your hand, please. I, Corbin Kells.
I, Corbin Kells.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
I will discharge faithfully.
I will discharge faithfully.
With the duties of police officer.
Duties of police officer.
For the city of Morris.
For the city of Morris.
Tommy of Stevens.
Tommy of Stevens.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Best of my judgment and ability.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others.
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome everyone.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good to have you. Okay, then we have an introduction. We have a new temporary person working in City Hall, Trigg. If you want to come up, Trigg, and introduce yourself and tell them what you're up to. Yeah, you can use that microphone right there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Trigg Spohhot. I work in the City Hall there with one of the Green Corps workers, so I help with the Concosco initiative that's going on right now. So, let's see here, I guess, a little background on me is I went to the University of Minnesota from, University of Minnesota Morris, I should clarify that, the one here, from 2017 to, well graduated this May, so. And I'm back here, happy to be here, so.
All right, super.
So I asked him if he met Sid and she said, yeah, she gave me some tasks to do already. So, so that's good.
You guys will have a lot of fun.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Sid's about first.
Yep.
Where are you from, Trigg?
Shoreview, Minnesota.
Shoreview, okay. Right, Kate, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I told him he didn't have to stay, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna go eat dinner, but.
Good idea.
Nice meeting you.
Take care.
Okay, no other citizen comments? We'll, we have no public hearings, we're reading an approval of minutes from November 23rd.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from the November 23rd meeting.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the November 23rd condensed version.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from 11/23/21.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, passment number three for the runway extension project, passment number one for the 2021 West Sixth Street improvements, passment number one for Yankee Ridge Road water main, the November transit report, and gambling reports from the Legion and the Eagles. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have petitioners' requests and communications. We get to accept some donations to the fire department from the FFA, the Horton Community Chest, and Curtin Savannah Wolf.
I will move approval of the donations as listed to the fire department.
I will second.
Any discussion?
Is there anything special that that's tagged for their discretion or just to their fire department budget or?
Um, no. Usually what will happen is the fire department will figure out what they want to spend it on.
Something that they need.
And then let us, let us know.
Great.
Very nice gesture. It'll go to good, good use.
Yeah, very nice. Okay, any, any further, any other comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. A resolution approv, no, yes, approving an agricultural lease for MTM Farms for the Morris Airport land for 2022.
Yeah, so they, they've been doing the farming around the airport for a number of years now, actually, since Gary Jacobson was doing it a while back. And, and actually, the, the number of acres at the airport are changing. They've changed a little bit over the last couple of years. And one of, one of the things they've done a really good job of, especially with the new technology they have in farming where they can accurately give acreage on what they're farming, their tractors or smart tractors, and they know where they're at and what they're doing. At the same time, there's going to be change at the airport. So, one of the things that we talked about is doing another one-year lease at the airport. It's about 100 acres. What happens is depending on how many acres they can actually farm, which they have an accurate description of, we'll, we'll find out from them and that's what they pay based upon. But, but now this next year, the airport's going to be closed down for quite a while this summer. And, and what's going to happen is at the end of the, the construction season, there's going to be a new updated map of the airport that's going to be made. It's going to include the new added runway. It's going to include the new added parallel taxiway. And it's going to include the removal of the grass runway. So that was one of the discussions that we've had over the last few years. Nobody uses it anymore, really. There's no need for it as a secondary landing spot because of wind, because of the nature of the way, the way the airport is now. And so what's going to happen is at the end of the year, we're going to recalculate how many acres are available to be able to farm on out there, at, at least until, one of the reasons we did that was to make a little bit more room for hangar space over on the one end. And so it could be that at some point in the future, there's another hangar that's built and now you're going to have room to do it. But I'm, I'm thinking next year, when we look at a, a land lease for, for the airport going into 2023, well, we might put it out to bids to see who's interested in, in farming that. There's another farmer that farms right around the airport land, and there's another farmer to the south. But this is just a one-year lease to get us through the end of this construction and then we'll go from there. We've been very happy with what they're doing there. And, and actually, there, there is a slight little, they're going to build a little haul road going into the airport, a runway on the northwest side as you come off the main highway. They're going to come in as, as, as close as they can in that direction to kind of limit how far they go down the gravel road when they're, they're hauling in. And so the farmer knows about that and knows that anything that's planted there is probably going to be taken out or knows where to plant. It's, it's amazing what they can do with GPS now in, in farming. So we'll go from there. So I'm recommending that the city council do a one-year deal.
Now, we've had longer-term leases in the past with that property, right?
Right.
But was it five or 10 years or?
Uh, usually it's probably three, three maybe. You know, and originally, you know, it was hayed. And then actually, probably the biggest change in the last few years is min dot. And the FAA, they've allowed corn to be planted around the airport where in the past they didn't, you know. But typically, you're going to want at least a three-year deal, so you're not dealing with it every year.
Right.
But we did, we did bid it out to try to find a good price for it. And the other thing is, you know, the, the farmers, they tend to do, they tend to do work to try to straighten out little low spots and things like that. And there's some tiling issues that, that were dealt with and, and things. And actually, when they, when they did the, the building of the runway extension, they, they had some excess clay that they moved around and, and kind of filled in some low spots. So, so it's kind of an ongoing process.
When we were able to purchase the land to extend the runway, it seems there was something there. One of the people that was selling land for the runway wanted to continue farming some of that. Is that included or in consideration with this or not?
Uh, this is, yeah, that, that's already taken care of. That's part of the process. So they, they're able to farm that land, even though we bought it, they're able to farm it for a period of time. I can't remember if it was 10 years. That was just part of the deal.
But that was an agreement that we took care of, so that's still able to continue on with that until?
And then they're, they're still, they're, they're paying the taxes on it though, you know, because that's the, that's the deal that we have with this landowner is you're, you're able to farm it, make money on it, but you got to pay the taxes on, on the land.
That was a fairly small chunk, if I remember.
Yeah, that was a very, very small piece of land. And it just made sense to keep it, keep it connected to what they were already doing, you know. And actually, you know, that's one of the discussions is, you know, there is one farmer that's farming a lot of land around the airport. And, and actually, when they, when they re, when they built the addition to the runway, they actually took the part, the base material from part of that farmland that this farmer farmed. And he doesn't own it. He farms it for another person. But, you know, ideally, and anybody that's been around farming knows, ideally, if you can limit the number of turns you have and the number of corners you have and things like that, it's going to be a lot easier to farm with the big equipment they have nowadays. And so it could be that, that there's some interest in the farmer that's doing all the rest of the land around the airport being interested in it. But at the same time, they tend to, they tend to not step on toes with each other, and that's a good thing.
I will move on that resolution approving an agricultural lease with MTM Farms for the airport land for 2022.
I will. Go ahead.
No, you got it.
Nope. Man.
I'll second.
Okay. Any, I was almost going to have to sit between you two, I guess.
We're not done yet.
A lot of time.
Any further discussion on this resolution? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Tom Tom Walers?
Yes.
Salvi, Miller?
Yes.
Dellicson?
Yes.
Mayor Gee.
Yes. We have a resolution authorizing acceptance of the redistribution of Unrequested American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Yeah, it gets confusing because we have so much money coming in from different places in little pieces of money because we had some money that came in for West Sixth Street, that project we did. We had some extra money came in for the airport. Well, then we got some extra money and Whitney was wondering what it was for. And I said, I have no idea what that's for. But as it turns out, there, there was an allocation made directly to big cities. And then there's allocation made to the state of Minnesota, and they redistributed that money down to cities and counties and townships based upon populations. And then there are, there are some cities that didn't take it. So they had some money that wasn't allocated out and accepted. And so what they did is they redistributed it to those communities that actually asked for the money. And so we wound up with another chunk of money, $18,000, $18,480 of ARP money. And that just goes into the pot that we had from, from before. And we used a chunk of that to do the water line on Yankee Ridge Road. And then the rest of it's going to go towards the project that the city councils got plans and specs being drawn up on for 2022. And that's what this is about. So we have to pass a resolution accepting this additional redistribution of funds.
Why wouldn't cities want to take that? They don't have anything to, anywhere to, I mean, it's not the restrictions of it, is it?
Uh, no, what it is, the majority of cities in Minnesota are small, little cities. So, you know, a good example would be like Donley or Alberta. And so then they need, typically, their city councils and if they have a clerk, might not understand, you know, what it's all about or what they can use it for. And, and that's really, really what happened. There's just a lot of small cities that didn't have the ability to understand what was even going on. And in some cases, that's the sad part. You know, where they talked about, maybe it would have been better to give it to the state of Minnesota and then have them allocate it out directly to programs that would benefit all the cities, you know. So the, in some cases, those cities, you know, like Alberta and Donley have county roads going through them. And so then the county, you know, takes care of some of those issues. But this was designated for utilizing for water and sewer, you know, so we're all ready to go because we're already working on those issues. A lot of places didn't understand it, which is kind of sad.
And I'm sure there's more paperwork to comply with.
Yeah, there's paperwork.
If you get the monies that you have to.
Yeah, there's paperwork to even ask for it, you know, let alone, you know, once, once you're, you have it in hand and, and dealing with it. We talked about that a little bit. The simplest thing to do is to put it into one or two things that are very simple. There's some cities that are putting in into very complicated things like housing rehab. And, and it's like that, I can't imagine the paperwork that you'd go through on something like that. And at the same time, they probably all have water line issues, sewer line issues, like we deal with here. And it's like just throw it in to the easiest thing to do because there's going to be other money coming for other things. We'll probably talk about that in a few minutes.
Well, I'll move on that resolution authorizing the acceptance of the redistribution of Unrequested American Rescue Plan Act funding dollars.
I will second that. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Tom Tom Miller?
Yes.
Walers?
Yes.
Salvi, Dellicson?
Yes.
Mayor Gee.
Yes. Okay, we have city manager reports and recommendations. We have 2022 licenses. You actually got an email with this at about 2:00 today. So I don't know if you pulled that up, if you have that.
Oh, yeah, I was looking for him earlier. I didn't see him. No, there they are.
What are we missing? Legion? Legion?
Legion and Me Mexical.
And the municipal?
Me Mexical.
Me Mexical. Okay, I knew there was two.
They have till the end of the year to get that in?
Yeah, that'll come up at the next meeting. Usually, usually at the last meeting, there's.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple of.
They have to be approved at the, at a meeting.
In December yet, so.
Well, if they don't, if they get it in March, they don't have their liquor license until March.
Then they, they wouldn't be able to be open.
Right.
Yeah, or serve, yeah.
Or serve alcohol.
I will move approval of accepting the 2022 licenses as listed.
I will second, and that is pending all with proof of their insurance correct. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
We forego, didn't we forego the liquor fee last year?
We did.
Because COVID?
Yep.
This year it's on the books.
Yep.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, every, yeah, everything should be open, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Going into next year.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. City manager newsletter.
So we can't start our budget meeting for 25 minutes, so we can sit and chit chat for a while, I suppose.
Right.
Actually, one of the things, I, I mentioned this right away when some, some people came in, but Whitney told me that we, did we get a check from the league? We got a check from the League of Minnesota Cities. So every year, they, they give out insurance rebates depending on what their, what their exposure was during the year with their insurance trust. And typically, it's like $5,000, $10,000. And this year, we got a check for what, $40,000? Ford, so, so that money basically comes back into the, the various places that paid into the insurance, which is, you know, the general fund and, and library and, and the utilities everybody. So then we'll figure out where that gets distributed back. But that's nice to know that they did okay. But I think it's just because COVID, there's a lot less activity, a lot less operational kind of stuff that's going on. And plus, they just had a good year. So that, that was something new that wasn't in my newsletter. State budget forecast came out, and I think everybody was shocked at the state. I think they're just absolutely shocked, you know, because it is a record surplus that they're looking at. And, and they're going to be going into session here in February and, and they're going to have to try to figure out what to do with it. We have a split government. We know how that's been working over, over the course of the last few years. They, they can't agree on hardly anything. And, and in order for them to deal with it, they're going to have to try to come to some kind of agreements. I try to follow that stuff fairly closely. You know, there's a lot of good talk shows that, that, that bring in the various sides to talk about it. And I, I think that on the ones, well, obviously, on the one side, the Republicans want to give it back, as a lot of it back, although they're already talking about doing certain things with that money that they probably wouldn't have talked about, you know, a couple of years ago. Like I mentioned just a little bit earlier before the meeting started, that they both seem to be in agreement that now is the time to stop taxing Social Security in Minnesota. Because if you get a Social Security retirement benefit, you have to pay taxes to the state of Minnesota. And the surplus is, the majority of the surplus is coming from income tax, corporate taxes, and sales tax. And so we're taxing people for a retirement benefit. And yet we have more tax, tax money than we need for what's going on. You know, they're talking about other things like funding family leave. That's, that's been a big issue on the state level and the federal level. I'm not sure how that would work, you know, because we actually do for full-time people provide leave. We, we actually have a pretty robust sick leave program and vacation program for people to be able to utilize. But obviously, people on, on the lower level in, in part-time jobs and jobs, you know, in retail and fast food and stuff like that, they don't have that kind of stuff. And what that, what that will look like, we have no idea. I've already heard the mention of a payroll tax. And when you start talking about a payroll tax, it's either the employee or the employer that has to pay the payroll tax. And, and so, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we don't wind up having an, an additional tax burden. But we'll see what happens. They, they also talked about, you know, other social programs, things like that. But, but in the end, the big one for us is local government aid. And I, I went to the coalition meeting. One of the things they would like to see is they'd like to see some kind of inflationary factor programmed into the local government aid. Because every year, we know costs go up, but the aid, you know, we saw, what was it, $12,000 more on about $2.4 million of local government aid. And that doesn't pay for inflation. So, so it could be, and, and actually, there's been a census taken and they, one of the things they said at the coalition meeting is after a census is done, there's, there's always been a look at the formula for local government aid. And I think that's going to happen again. And so everybody's kind of sitting at the table trying to figure out what that would look like. It's a pretty complicated form. There's more cities that want to get aid. And that might be the solution to raising the aid is to give it to more cities, even though those cities probably don't have the need that we have. There are cities that are growing that are losing aid. Detroit Lakes is a very good example of a city that's losing aid because they're growing. And they don't have as much of a need because their tax base is growing and their population's growing. So we're, we're going to watch that really close to see what happens with the state of Minnesota, but they're just flush with money. And, and it's not because there's a little bit of cares money that's in there, but it's sales tax, income tax, and corporate taxes. That's, that's where it's coming from. We talked about the ARP funding. I put in there a pretty good-sized note on redistricting. And actually, I had a chance to work with Stephanie up at the auditor's office to take a look at, you know, what we would need to look at. We've got the census numbers. We got the population numbers. And realistically, when we sat down and we looked at it, we know that we have six precincts, which I don't understand how we ever got to that point, to have six precincts in a city the size of Morris. Sitting at the table with Detroit Lakes, they have 9,600 people. They have three precincts and three polling places. And we have, we had, we have six precincts and we had six polling places. And so realistically, when you look at the census numbers and where, where it's located, it fits almost perfectly to take everything west of the railroad tracks and put it into one precinct, one ward, one polling place. And then on the east side, to split the east side into two precincts. And so basically, what we're, we're looking at is recommending that we just take the two precincts that were on the, the west side, put them together, take the two precincts that were on the southeast side, put them together, and the two precincts on the northeast side, and put them together. And the only adjustment in the lines is going to be the annexed-in property wound up voting on the west side of town. Which, it was a numbers thing. That's why it wound up turning out that way. So if we do that, then you wind up with, you know, three precincts, three polling places. And then it, it fits a little bit better into how the county can deal with, with the city precincts. Right now, we're split up into four county commissioner districts that, that are actually expand way out. And so realistically, if you look at it, you're probably going to have a township with one of the city precincts and another township with another city precinct. And that's going to be probably it, you know, be, and, and so we'll take a look at it. The other thing that Sandy and I did was we looked at what the process is. So we, we simply would have to do an ordinance to, to change the, the ward and precinct boundaries. And we would do that sometime starting in January. By, I think it's February 5th, the legislature. By, I think it's February fifth, the legislature has to let us know what the, the lines are for legislative districts. And then by, um, I think I put it in there, the end of, what is it, the end of March? March twenty-ninth, we have to let the county know. So the timing's just, just perfect for having a first reading of an ordinance, find out what the state's gonna do. If we have to adjust it, we could have the second reading, make an adjustment, and then publish it. We have to publish it for thirty days, and then it would go into effect. And along with that, we would set our polling places, uh, reset them, but they're gonna be the same as what we just set them now. So that's kinda what's going on with redistricting. Uh, I, I think it's a good plan. It's gonna work for pretty much everybody. You met the Green Corps person, uh, and actually, we specifically applied for a Green Corp service member to work with the county on organics. So basically to work with Sid, uh, who's the intern now, and so that's gonna work out really well for everybody. Um, we're gonna re, re-advertise for the sustainability project coordinator. I applied for an extension of the LCCMR grant that we had. There's about a third of it left. We had enough money to have some, somebody for about three years. There's about a third of it left, so uh, we'll have another year probably to spend that, and then we know right now that our new request for another sustainability project coordinator for the follow-on three years is going to the legislature. It's part of the, the, uh, LCCMR, although they're gonna be meeting again. I don't know if they'll change that, but as of right now, that's going to the legislature to approve. Uh, so we'll continue to have somebody working on these sustainability, um, projects that we've been doing, and that's worked out really well for us. Uh, water line project's pretty much done. You know, the, uh, only thing left is the, probably the, you know, just making sure that everything is created and seeded and, uh, finished off right in the spring. Um, I believe the county's already hooked up to the water. I think, uh, I think Jim Riley and Sons might have hooked up already too. They were gonna hook up to it, so then they would have water. I think we talked before about Morris Floral. That, that transition seems to be taking place. Um, from when I understand, the developer is working on the paperwork um, to get everything taken care of and, and at some point, probably in the next month, we're gonna find out, you know, who it is and what their plans are for that property, but we didn't have to do anything with it yet. We didn't have to spend a penny dealing with it and, and, uh, hopefully that all works out. And then the last thing I had was just solar. Uh, all the solar is installed except the library is not interconnected right now with Otter Tail Power. We're waiting for, for a subcontractor to come in and move a power point uh, for, for that, uh, system. And then once that's done, then they'll do the interconnection, put the meter in, and it'll be up and running. And then we'll have a little get-together somewhere to celebrate having four city buildings with about a hundred and thirteen, uh, KW of solar, uh, system power, and then they'll be putting in some kiosks and the liquor store, the, uh, library, and the, the community center right outside this door here that you can walk up to and look at what the production is on, on, on the solar system at that time. So it's gonna be kinda fun to see. I've been kinda watching the meters, so we're making, we're making power. You know, it's, it's kinda.
We're operational right now with?
This building, City Hall and the liquor store.
Thank you.
Actually, this one is, this one's probably the most productive one right now. The liquors, this is a bigger system. The liquor store's a smaller system. But the way it works is whatever we make goes right into our use. Any excess that we make will go back to the power company, and then there's a power purchase agreement where they buy it back from us. And obviously, the liquor store will never probably sell anything, 'cause it's gonna use everything that it makes. This building has already sent power back to the power company. City Hall, I think, has sent just a little bit back, and when you think about it, you know, they're closed, were closed on, you know, Saturday and Sunday, and this place doesn't have the activity it, it had before, but it's a bigger system. The library's a big system, and we're just hoping that thing gets cranked up here fairly quick. You know, so that we can, even in the wintertime, you know, they're, they're capturing sun and obviously, the peak power's gonna be when the sun starts getting higher and, in the sky and staying, staying longer. So with that, we just throw out, probably for questions, if you got any questions on anything else that's going on till we get to the six o'clock hour. We did have, after the city manager report, we did receive notice that Federated Telephone is terminating their cable franchise with us, which wasn't a lot of money. It, it was about fifteen thousand dollars a year that we got from them, but uh, they discontinued cable TV. So they're no longer providing that, uh, as, as a service, and they're focusing on their, uh, their, their phone and their, uh, their, uh, internet.
Yeah, they're still using the fiber optic, and that's for the phone and internet, and, is that right?
Yeah.
How, how does that affect that access channel? 'Cause wasn't some of the franchise money paying for upkeep on that, or not at all?
Uh, yeah, it was.
So we just, we're, now how does that work? Is this still the access channel because of the one cable company here?
Yeah, I think we still have the one access channel. We still have enough money that we're, 'cause they're the bigger company. So we're getting more money off of them in that, that fee.
And that will continue to cover the cost of keeping that access?
But, you know, the, the, the interesting thing is what is the future of? You know, we asked that question at the time when we're talking about this. What is the future of cable TV? Uh, and, and, you know, the other, the other thing I'll tell you is that there's a lot of people that are streaming a lot of things, but it's expensive. And I think people are figuring that out and trying to figure out what they are gonna pay for and what they're not. There's people that are dropping cable TV, but then at the same time, they're, they're paying a lot of money out for the various streaming services. You know, and then you have things like, I have Dish and they dropped, uh, NBC. You know, which is, I think NBC's got the Olympics for the winter. So you won't be able to watch the Olympics on Dish unless you live stream it through, um, you know, one of the NBC, you know, streaming services or something like that. But I don't know what the future's gonna bring, but that's, it, it surprised me. It really surprised me, 'cause I didn't expect that to be coming. I knew they're gonna be dropping cable television, but you just don't put two and two together that. You know, that's what the franchise fee is for. You know, it's for their cable TV service. I went back and looked at the franchise agreements, 'cause there is no franchise fee for internet. You know, even though they're using fiber optics and, and, uh, you know, in, in this last year, we know there's been a couple of issues with directional boring of fiber optics through, uh, other infrastructure, like, you know, behind here, the post offices drain going into the storm sewer got, got just nailed. And so then we had to do some work on the alley because it undermined the, the base. And then over, I think over on, uh, Eighth Street too, they had a problem with that. We've seen them directional bore through concrete structures and sewers and stuff like that. So that's, you know, that's why it's important for them to understand they're in our right of way, but you know, sometimes there's some issues that we have to deal with too. Uh, what else? Any other questions?
Anything else that we need to talk about? And this, uh, this, uh, federated is just informational, we don't have to.
Right, there's nothing, nothing that we need to do that I may.
Over the holidays, uh, normally don't we talk about offices being closed or open, or do we have to deal with that this year, or no?
Well, no, bec- because we made Christmas Eve a holiday now.
Okay.
So it used to be that Christmas Eve, we would, if it was on a weekday, we'd close early on Christmas, but we just made it a holiday, and it's easier for everybody, actually, to understand what's gonna happen.
So you actually get two holidays?
Two holidays, so.
Days this year?
Yeah, it's kinda weird.
The twenty-third and twenty-fourth, or how you doing it?
So we'll get, for Christmas, we'll get on Friday, 'cause Christmas on Saturday and Christmas Eve, we'll get on Thursday.
So Thursday and Friday.
So Thursday, Friday will be off. Yeah.
Okay. Looking forward to that day off.
Yeah.
Those, those days, huh?
It's been, it's actually been very quiet, you know, even though there's been, you know, the, the one thing I would tell you and just, you know, maybe just throw this out, because there's been a lot of activity going on with regards to building. You know, and, and, you know, Mike Jacobson's always said that he likes Morris, 'cause Morris has so much going on. You know, the prime steakhouse is is, I think they got all the base work and everything in and, and put in drainage and stuff like that, so they'll be building that and, um.
Buildings are actually going in today.
Yeah, so the, their plan is to be open in, in the spring and, and, uh, the, the, uh, there's some questions that actually came up to me with regards to what's going up over by, um, behind where the prime steakhouse is and, um, that's commercial, commercial, uh, storage. So they're actually gonna be putting in some mini storage there, and they're gonna, and they, ultimately, they have, I think, five buildings planned for that site. So there, you know, a million dollars in construction for storage there. Um, and then, uh, maybe, maybe one of the things I can give you a quick update on is where we're at with the Morris Grand Hotel. 'Cause that got a little bit, did I write you about that? I don't know if I wrote you about it or not, but. It got a little bit squirrelier because, and I have, uh, we, you know, I talked about this at the SEIC meeting the other day, because, uh, it, uh, the gentleman that bought the building, uh, from the bank, he owns the building and the contents, um, very nice guy. He's got very good plans for that place. He knows, he's a mechanical contractor, um, he, he, when it comes to the mechanical part of it, he, he can do all the work himself. You know, 'cause that's what he does for, did for a living, does for a living. And so actually, he came in and he, he's turned the water on, uh, turned the power, uh, power on, turned the, uh, gas on, and then he tested all the systems, and then he shut everything down again, because, um, there is a right to, what, what's it called? It's not reclaim, redeem the mortgage.
Redemption.
Redem, there's a redemption, but there's actually two, two different things. There's a mortgage and then there's a lien that the bank had on the property, and the bank did not give up the lien on the property, and so then there's a right to redeem that. But somebody bought both of them. So there's, there's a developer from the Twin Cities that bought the rights to redeem.
Not the guy who's working on it?
Not the guy that's working on it. So, so, and that just confused the heck out of me, and so then, you know, I, I talked to a couple of different people about it and but, and then I talked to him about it again, but, so this guy's trying to market the place 'cause he has the right to redeem it. And then the guy, the guy that's looking at it right now, he gets paid everything that he put into it. Uh, but he owns the contents. So what do you think he's gonna do with the contents if somebody else walks in and claims the building? He's probably gonna take all the contents with him and, and, and so then, you know, we're, we're being very careful about who's coming and asking about that place, but the, 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 the big timeframe is April, 'cause they had six months from the time that it was sold on a sheriff's sale and, and, uh, so come April, if nobody reclaims that, redeems that, then he'll come in, he'll fire everything up and start working on stuff, 'cause he knows what needs to be done. You know, and he, he's already got his financing in place. He already has ideas in place. He knows the mechanical side of it, what needs to be done and and, and everything, but it's just a really squirrely process when you have a big building like that. He loves Morris. He, he thinks this is a place that you could do really well. Fixing up a place like that, it's, you know, it's not gonna be a grand stay hotel. It's gonna be, it's gonna be something different, but, uh, uh, he knows what a room should look like. He knows what, uh, you know, customers are gonna want, and probably the biggest thing is he's gonna try to find somebody to help run the restaurant. So that's kinda where we're at with that, but now we just wait and see, you know, um, what happens with that, but I don't understand how all that real estate stuff works. It's just crazy.
Does that normally happen at sheriff's sale? Somebody comes in and buys a redemption? So this is like really weird.
It's strange.
Somebody got in there and figured out what they could do.
You did send me an email on that. Yeah, this is, we've never seen anything like this before, not in the time I've been here, anyway.
Yeah, and the guy that bought it, the redemption, um, he's from the Twi- that's what he does. I mean, he's, he's a guy that, you know, they're, they're in, that's, you know, real estate, you know, they're trying to make money. There's already been an offer to redeem the redemption, made to the guy that we've been talking to. And he's like, you know, and it's not, yeah, I think it's all on the up and up, but still at the same time, you know, he has to decide what he wants to do. So hopefully, hopefully he winds up with it, because he has really good ideas, and, you know, like I said, he already tested all the mechanical. He knows what works, what doesn't work, what he has to do to make everything work, you know, whether it's a swimming pool or, or a hot tub or whatever it is.
Okay, um, any questions, uh, on the, uh, city manager report? Or the informational items? Okay, we've, it's six o'clock. We'll move on to the budget meeting.
So, I see Jay's here. I see, so what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I'm actually gonna give you a copy of my PowerPoint presentation. Um, and then the only thing you don't have is you don't have the, uh, capital play listing, and that way I'm not gonna fire up my computer and you want one, you know, anybody else has one? Do you have one, Randy?
Yeah, I just got one.
Typically, we don't, we don't have a lot of people showing up for a budget meeting. And that's been historical, but, um, there's a couple of things that I just wanna point out, uh, when you look in, in this PowerPoint. Obviously, we're talking about a levy and, and, and a budget for next year. Uh, if you go to the page two, uh, we're looking at a property tax levy of one million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five. This is three percent more than what, uh, last year's levy was. And if you recall, last year's levy was the same as the year before, because of covid, we froze the levy and and so it, it was just important to take a look at, you know, um, not overtaxing people, although, uh, I'm gonna share some information that it's just important to understand. And then the next page, you'll see where the levy is broken down between the general fund, and I have a little, uh, asterisk there, because the general fund winds up, uh, and this was a change that was made in accounting standards, uh, since I came back to Morris, 'cause it wasn't this way before, but um, we, we have to show our, all of our, um, debt levies for things like equipment in the general fund. Used to be you'd see a line item there for the capital outlay fund, and that's where that would be. So this general fund levy, um, includes, um, um, some excess debt levy funds, and I'll explain that in a minute. And then it includes a, a levy for a sweeper, 'cause we talked about buying a new street sweeper. And then, uh, uh, payment for a loader that we purchased, I think it was last year, was when we added the loader. If you go to the next page, this is just a historical, uh, chart of our levy. I always like to include this one, 'cause if you go all the way back to two thousand and one, you can see where we actually dropped our levy down considerably in two thousand and two. And, and you'll see why in a minute, 'cause it has to do with local government aid and what we got. But the, you can just see how we have kind of a steady growth in our levy, and there's few years where we froze it. Um, depending on what was going, I think we had three freezes in a row. And then, of course, the last previous two years were frozen. And then the next page shows the breakdown of the, the city's levy, and majority of it's for the general fund, which includes some, uh, some equipment levies, and then you get into our bonds. Um, and we've actually seen some really good bond rates, so we've refunded bonds. And then we have our library levy, and, uh, and then we have tax abatement, which is basically the, the drips property. So tax abatement, we're, we're, we're giving them the taxes that they pay, pay on their brand-new facility there. And it's for a period of time, and then when that's done, then everybody gets the benefit of that, that tax. Pay on their brand new facility there and it's for a period of time and then when that's done, then everybody gets the benefit of that, that tax. And that abatement is, the, the county abates the taxes, the school district abates the taxes too. So, so once that, that is done, and I can't remember how many years that was, but the.
Do we still have abatement on the property up by the cemetery or is that?
Uh, we have tax increment on that property, yep.
I think it's twenty years on that abatement, wasn't it?
Uh, no, I don't.
Or ten?
I think it, it wasn't, I think it was more than ten, but not twenty. I'd have to go back and look. So then the two pieces that I'd really like to mention just here, cause it's important to understand and one of the things that I did is, uh, I actually brought, I brought my tax statement with. Uh, this is the proposed property taxes for my property on uh, Ridge Road. And the important thing to understand, so we have market value and the market value is the value of the property in the city of Morris that, is available to, to use for taxes. So our market value went up three percent. Now, the one thing I would just caution you on is that market value goes up a couple of different ways. One way it can go up is, brand new property, which we know has happened. Uh, the other way it can go up is value your property. And one of the things that we know has been happening in this last year is that uh, real estate prices have been going way up. Way up to the point where there's a lot of people nervous about how they're gonna appraise the value of property moving forward. So, market value goes up and the way the system works is there's a set of tax rates that the state of Minnesota has. They apply it to the various different market values, cause it could be commercial, residential, multifamily. And then they come up with what they call ta- tax capacity, so it'd be like, if you taxed a hundred percent of the market value, the capacity would be um, three million two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Um, that's actually grown um, to three point eight percent. So value went up three percent. Capacity went up three point eight percent. And so then you go into the next thing, we take our levy, that one, million six hundred and fifty seven thousand divided into the tax capacity and we come up with our tax rate. And so then you can see our tax rate actually went down. So we raised taxes three percent, but the actual tax rate on property went down um, point four percent. We had more value to be able to spread it out on is basically the way it works. So for my property, I looked at my property. My property taxes actually went up one point nine percent uh, based upon the pro- proposed taxes, but, my value went up two point seven percent. So if I factored it back, um, to where my value was before, my taxes would've went down about point nine percent. So that's, you know, it's just a rough idea how this stuff works. When people come to me and say, can you explain to me what's gonna happen with my taxes? And I, I'll tell them I can, cause it, I, it's so complicated, but, but in general terms, we're, we're raising taxes a little bit, three percent. Um, we have expect, we know we have new construction that's taking place. And so the net effect for the property taxpayers isn't gonna be great unless they saw an increase in their property value. One of the things that I was told before is if your property uh, value goes up, then you just made money, because the, value to your property is, is more and I, I don't know what the assessor's gonna do this next year. Cause there's some property uh, sales that are just unbelievable in this last year. So, so that's, that's the two big things I wanted to point out. If you continue on through here, we've got, um, you know, the, the budget, the overall city budget. Let me just see where we're at. And these, these are just, I mean, it's, it's hard to compare year to year because there's so many different things like, I, I said we, we're gonna buy a new sweeper, so now we have a new levy that's going into the general fund and that affects things. So we, we have, the city budget is, is going up about five point six percent, but there's some, that includes everything. That includes the utilities, that includes the liquor store, that includes everything and, and, you, you come back and you look at the general fund, which is the operating budget of the city. And that's, that's going up two point two percent, but that also includes, you know, the sweeper levy. So, but it als, it also includes some additional things um, that, that, make, ma, it makes it hard to understand exactly where we're at, cause we're, we're moving from the general fund, we're moving about three hundred and, seventy, eighty thousand dollars into the capital outlay fund, uh, and that is a little bit more than what we moved last year. And then the question is, well, how did we do that? Cause we raised wages two and a half percent. Well, part of that is because we had a new levy for, for uh, the sweeper and that comes out in the end. Transit's a hundred percent funded for, for next year. And so then that's more revenue that came in to pay for the expenses. We moved some excess levy money in, into the, to the uh, general fund and, and so realistically, um, that's kind of the balancing factor that we have at the end. Next year, uh, we're gonna have to probably come up with some money to, to pay for our share of transit, so that'll come out of that excess money that we moved into the capital outlay fund. Cause we, we spend it on one-time things. We don't spend it on ongoing things. If, let, let me just, so that was two point two percent. And then there's a couple of graphs that just show up a nice steady increase in our, our budget for the general fund. You know, there's nothing wild in there. And then the next graph is LGA and uh, if you look at LGA back in two thousand and one, we got a million. And then in two thousand and two, we got, I'm, this is actually, I'm getting too old to read these, but, so we got a million, about a million, maybe one. In two thousand and two, we got a million five hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. And so my favorite thing to do with legislators is say, what's the purpose of LGA? It's to keep taxes down. What did we do with that? We lowered our tax levy. So we gave it, gave it back to the people in a tax levy reduction. And then we started from a smaller amount, started working up. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how much of these other, these other ones don't change much. Uh, capital improvement, we've talked about. Um, you know, what we're planning on doing, uh, the normal stuff, uh, reclaims, stuff like that. The only other thing is we added sidewalk maintenance where we're doing the sidewalk cutting, so we're gonna do another fifty thousand of that and, and then we do have some airport issues that are, are coming up, but I'm, I'm thinking that there's gonna be money coming from the federal government. We're already starting to see some of that come out. Capital outlay fund, um, we had a two hundred and one percent increase in our capital outlay fund. Uh, the primary reason for that is cause of the transit garage. And I'm still hoping that with the federal money that there might be a phone call or an email that says they're, they'll fund a hundred percent of that, cause, cause I really think there's gonna be a change, um, in federal funding for airports and transit and stuff like that. So, um, this is the only budget that we actually budgeted uh, um, and, using some of the ca- capital outlay reserve for the transit garage, but um, in the end, our local share of that is two hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna be uh, we actually whittled that down to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we'd have to take out of capital outlay uh, reserves just because of, the money that we're transferring into the capital outlay fund to pay for stuff. And um, I'm just trying to think. You have a listing of all the, the equipment and everything and, obviously Jay doesn't have it, but if he wants to look at it, he can. Um, all those things that we talked about in the work session, putting in there. I, I did make a note on the one that you talked about as far as uh, hybrid vehicle. You know, I know there's some discussion about how much do we use a vehicle and actually Whitney and I talked about, there are people that go to, training conferences, stuff like that. In some cases, they use their own vehicle, uh, because they might be, stopping at a family member's house or bringing somebody with or whatever and, and so, so realistically, um, if we're gonna do something with the city vehicle, there's gonna have to be a policy change to make sure that everybody is using it. And part of that, like I talked about in the work session, is getting a vehicle that's more usable by everybody. Uh, you know, I, I can drive the Chevy Volt pretty easily. It's a pretty small car though. You know, and if you want two, three people to go to a conference, probably not the best choice of vehicles. So if you look at something different, um, you know, uh, that might be a better option, but, but I still like the idea of having a hybrid vehicle because of the mileage and everything and, and uh, uh, we'll just talk about that before we do anything different with it.
Yeah, we just need to find something that's gonna get used if we're gonna be shelling up funds for something, something that's, friendly for everyone, that's gonna potentially use it.
But you, a lot of the normal stuff, you know, goes into your, um, you know, whether it's uh, law enforcement or fire department or streets, you know, we have the, the park, um, project that we did. There's a lot of sidewalk work that's gonna happen in parks uh, through this one, um.
Uh, can I ask you a question about the fire relief benefit? Um, I see in, the resolution itself says, wow, that we're gonna increase it to twenty three hundred?
Yep.
And actually in the budget guidance information, it says you're recommending going from twenty two fifty or from tw- twenty two hundred, to twenty two fifty. So I just wanted a clarification. Is it, what is it? Is it going from?
Should be twenty three hundred.
Going from to twenty two?
Should be twenty three hundred.
Twenty three hundred.
Yeah, currently is twenty two fifty.
It's twenty, it's twenty two fifty and.
Right now?
Yep.
Going to twenty three hundred. Okay. I seen that in the guidance there and I was just a little bit confused, but.
You know, and that's, it, it's one of those things. I, I had a very good meeting with the relief and we're gonna, we're gonna meet again here. Um, the, the biggest issue I had with that, just so you know and understand, they did very well in the stock market. And a couple of other factors uh, in this last report we got. So there was a, a very large surplus of money, uh, in there and, and that's why they recommended raising their benefit. Last year they had twelve thousand dollars in surplus. So, so what, what I said is, if, if, if you're doing really well now and we make a big adjustment, and then all of a sudden something happens and you're not doing well, so let's, let's continue to look at where you're at with that. And, and then let's look at the next report and the one question I said, asked was, is anybody gonna be retiring here like right now? And it didn't sound like anybody. They actually have a much younger group now, where they don't have, you know, a lot of older. I think there's only one person over twenty years uh, that I saw on the list, but uh, so there's nothing urgent, you know, that, that's needs to be done. But at the same time, you know, one of the things I said in the past is that, that's, that's how you're able to raise your benefit is by investing the money that you get. And then if, once you have enough money, being able to raise your benefit. A- and so, so we need to allow them to do that if that's the case, uh, that they're doing really well. And they're doing really well right now with their investments.
But there's a form from the state that they have to show that they have the allotment of money.
Yep.
For the years of service for every member.
That's the way it works.
We should be able to go back and look at previous years or a, a three or a five year average to see where the numbers are. If they're fluctuating, yes, that makes sense that we, we need to, but it's nice to try to keep some type of a, a even keel and not jumping up and down. If somebody retires this year and then next year and we're, we're jumping around at two or three hundred dollar difference per year of service, is something that they always tried to, to stay away from, but I agree with what you're saying. It makes sense.
And we steadily increase that and.
But to take an average and it seems like those numbers come back from the state. It's normally, isn't it late summer or, fall when we have the, the information back from the state after their audit or?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and we did get some, there's, I think since we, we've been doing it, there's been six, uh, reliefs have dropped their reliefs and gone to the Minnesota State Retirement. You know, and that's one of the things that, that, that's been happening is they've been encouraging reliefs to go into the Minnesota pool. I don't think that's probably the best way. I wouldn't do that if I was a member of the relief. Cause they're doing a very good job of investing their money themselves and then they get control over it. Uh, but, but yeah, that's what we do and, and so they're, they're still kinda in the middle of where the, the leftover ones are. But then some of that information is getting a little bit harder to get in a timely manner and they change it and, and realistically, you know, we, we know what the basics are and we're able to sit down and talk about that and. And it, it could be that next year at this time, you're gonna see a recommendation to raise it up more than fifty dollars. You know, and I don't have a problem with that as long as we're comfortable knowing that, you know, they, they have a pool of money to be able to pay for it. Cause you know, if the stock market collapsed now, then you, you'd be paying a tenth of that deficit, a year until it was caught back up. That's kinda the way it works. You know, raise, re- raising that money and we'd have to pay that in on the budget.
It's nice to be able to offer that benefit to our firefighters.
And they're doing, they're doing a really good job of finding firefighters. I mean, it's, there's a lot of departments that are just struggling trying to stay, stay, going. And yet I think we're up to, I think it's thirty two, they had two deferred ones that were gonna be coming off. That we're still on the list, but uh, I know at one point they're down to twenty eight, twenty seven maybe.
And it's tougher with people being gone. I mean, it's very common for people job-wise to be out a lot farther or, to be doing things away from your community and it is a, a heck of an incentive to try to get recruits to come in if you have a nice retirement. That you can show them that and you put in your twenty years, here's what, where we're at right now and, and hopefully it keeps growing, so.
The rest of these funds don't really change much. Um, um, the, the other one I would just mention is the water utility fund. We're still trying to figure out what that thing's gonna look like moving forward and uh, the one issue that we have, um, we actually went from, we, we show about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in, in net income there, but, um, we still have to, we have to finance part of the depreciation. We actually have to cash that and put it into a separate account. And, and, and that's, that's the reason why I'm recommending that we continue to raise the water rates just slightly, going into the next year so we can make sure that we have enough revenues to be able to cover that. I, I don't know if you remember what that number was, Whitney. One sixty? Yeah, so it's, I mean, we have to, we have to basically put money aside to build a new water plant.
So these numbers on our water utility fund, does that include with that number that we have left here for the net income? After we've taken that money out and put into our fund?
No, not yet. It's not out of there yet.
Needs to come out of there.
So it still needs to come out of there. And then the sewer is a, a smaller fund so that, you know, we don't have as big an issue with that, although at some point in the future, um, we may be needing to look at a sewer project. Refuge, basically, that's an in and out pretty much. Uh, the liquor store, uh, actually I, 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 I would just say that, uh, I think we do really well in the fourth quarter at the liquor store is, is what, what I think is gonna happen. We're down, down a little bit from what we uh, if you just strictly looked at, you know, September, year-to-date number with regards to what we had for revenues, but you can see in twenty twenty, we uh, budgeted, twenty, two million one hundred and fifty six thousand in revenues and we saw almost um, two million five hundred and sixty. So we did very well last year and we knew that and, and you know, it was because of COVID and everything that was going on with, um, restaurants and liquor, liquor establishments and stuff like that. So we'll see, we'll see how this comes out. I think we're gonna still have a really good year at the liquor store. I know they're moving a lot of product and everything in there and. We'll keep watching that. Um, central garage is pretty much a, just, break even. And I just made some notes for the future and um, we talked about some of them. Uh, federal stimulus money, we have no idea. They have no idea. Everybody's trying to figure out how much money is gonna come from where. That with the FAA and they have no idea how this FAA money is gonna come down through, you know, that's in the stimulus, but uh, you know, we're kinda wait, waiting to see what's gonna happen and uh, labor agreements are done, insurance, we kinda know what's going on. Um, we've been. We've been successful trying to find people like police officers so far, transit drivers so far. Uh, it's getting a little bit harder to be able to find people. And actually, one of the things that we talked about at, at, at the SEIC was doing a marketing campaign for people to come to Morris to live and work. A lot of cities are doing that now. I know Superior's doing that, trying to find people that are willing to come out here and live and work. We got jobs here. Let's see what, I think we talked, there's election next year. We're hoping the student numbers at the campus, uh, start going back up again, but we're doing good. Any questions?
The books order that we talked about, thank you for the information sheet, uh, and you sent me that information. Uh, that's in here also, or is that something to be?
Yep, that's in there. They're basically, they're just basically big bookshelves that they can.
They're mobile, so.
They're mobile. They can push them around.
Makes sense.
They're big bu- bookshelves that they can push around.
Yeah, so they can, if they have, um, just to increase space and utilize space properly, I suppose. Makes sense. That was goo- that was helpful. I was thankful she sent that to me.
Any questions?
Another year, a lot of information in here. A lot of work went into it.
So, any questions from? The man in the back.
Okay.
So then we just have resolutions, so we have to have approvals.
So we have four resolutions we need to do. I will move a resolution approving the final twenty-twenty-one levy for the collection in twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
House Member Solby, Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Delikson?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes. Next resolution, I will move approval of, uh, a resolution adopting the final twenty-twenty-two budget for the city of Morris.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
House Member Wallers?
Yes.
Solby, Miller?
Yes.
Delikson?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes.
And I can move on to the next resolution, increasing the sewer and water utility rates for twenty-twenty-two.
I will second.
And that will be approximately a three percent increase?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
House Member Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Solby, Delikson?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes. And finally, we have the resolution setting the annual benefit for the Fire Relief Association.
I will move a resolution setting the annual pension benefit for the Morris Fire Relief Association to increase that by fifty dollars per year of service, starting the first of twenty-twenty-two.
I will second that. Any further, any discussion on that? We'll have roll call vote, please.
House Member Solby, Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Delikson?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes. Okay, any other activity that needs to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.